Welcome, everyone. I'm calling the November 15th City Council Meeting to order. Due to the Governor's Proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting is being held remotely this evening. At this point in time, I'm going to take a moment to take a rule call of the council members in attendance. So please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Did you call me?
I did.
I didn't. Yeah, I didn't even hear you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Council President Hunt.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Thank you all. The next item on our, all seven council members are here this evening. And the next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, which I hope you will join me in. But if you could please keep your microphones muted, that would be great. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is Audience Comments. And for those of you who have submitted the online form to make comments, your name will be called shortly. For those who have joined us tonight and would like to make comments but did not sign up in advance, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on a phone, try pressing star three. If you are joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device, but one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raised hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. There is a public hearing this evening, AB 8198, that proposed 2022 budget and salary ordinance. And comments on this item must be made under the public hearing occurring later in the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comment?
Yes.
Thank you. So for those making comments, please make sure to direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. When you are done, please remute your microphone. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you are able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments written in verbal are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, the first person who signed up to speak is Nicole Miller. Nicole, in just a moment, I'll make you a panelist. You'll then see an option to unmute yourself and can also turn your video on. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. Good evening to the mayor and to the council, and thank you for allowing me the time to address a concern that I have. As the host stated, my name is Nicole Miller. I'm a resident and homeowner here in Issaquah. My husband, Mike, and I live up in the Issaquah Highlands. We have one son who is a sophomore at Issaquah High School and a recent graduate of Issaquah High School who's in college. Because the allotted time is fairly small, I want to jump right to my bottom line. Based on my observations over the past three-plus years of living here in Issaquah, I think it is pretty obvious that we have a serious crime problem. Theft has been and continues to be a source of stress, irritation, frustration, and loss for so many of our residents, but also one that we as a community seem to have grown desensitized to, and I include myself in that group. Without deterrents in place to reduce theft, and you know, I understand that it can't be completely eliminated, I really fear that Issaquah will continue to feel welcoming not only to families who desire a beautiful place to live, but also to criminals who view it as an opportunity to take and to take whatever they want whenever they want to. Give you a little bit of background about myself. I'm a military brat, which means I grew up as the child of somebody who served in the military. I served in the U.S. Air Force for seven years. I'm married to an Air Force pilot who served for 23 years. I've lived in 10 states and two foreign countries, and I've moved 18 times over the course of my adult life. I'm almost 50 years old, and I can tell you that I have never, in all the places that I've lived, witnessed the amount of preventable crime that I have seen here in Issaquah. And what has shocked me more than the crime itself is the response to it. There doesn't appear to be any outrage. There's no calls to the police. There just seems to be this acceptance, acceptance by store managers, acceptance by neighbors. I'm not quite sure I understand why. About two weeks ago now, I stepped out of that acceptance role, and that happened because I was at the Target in Issaquah on October 28th, and I witnessed four people, all men, in the span of an hour steal hundreds, if not thousands of dollars' worth of electronics and alcohol from Target. I confronted the first thief just as he was leaving the store, another who left the store about 10 minutes after the first one, while I was speaking with the store manager, and she was explaining to me why she couldn't intercede or why she couldn't call 911. And then I actually confronted the third criminal who I saw that day. And as embarrassing as it may sound, I'm going to admit that I verbally harassed him in the alcohol aisle. I harassed him as he exited the store, around the registers, and out into the parking lot, where I told him that if he proceeded out of the store, I would call 911. He didn't seem to care, and I did call 911. So there I was in the parking lot of Target shouting for someone to come and stop the thieves, soaked to the bone because it was raining, and all I could think of is, how can this be happening? The 911 operator is telling me that she cannot send the police. And what I screamed into the phone at her is that this is anarchy. And the definition of anarchy is a state of disorder due to the absence or non-recognition of authority. So I'm very close to the end of my allotted time. I hope with that story and some of the background information that I provided, you can allow me to ask the following four questions of the council. And I know that this is something that can't be addressed in one meeting, and I know that it's not fully your responsibility that we as citizens of Issaquah and the city council and the mayor and the police force all have a role to play. My first question is this: What is the city council's position on the amount of theft in our stores and neighborhoods? And are you at all concerned that we are following in the footsteps of well-publicized cities like Seattle and San Francisco, or seeing businesses shuttered, knowing that that leads to a decrease in tax revenue and a loss of gainful employment for our citizens? The second: Do we even know how much crime is occurring if no reports are being filed because police aren't responding? Third: Are we allowing an underground market, if you will, of goods to be sold on the internet? I'm pretty sure that we are doing that by the amount of alcohol I saw leave Target that day. And fourth: Why are the police not pursuing criminals because the store won't prosecute? As I understand it, the job of the police force is to serve and protect. I have never heard of a caveat, and again, you know, I'm not in criminal justice, so I don't know, but I'm not familiar with the caveat that the police only respond if there's going to be a prosecution. I believe that the presence of an officer or a threat of an arrest sends a powerful message to a criminal. So in conclusion, I really feel that it is a responsibility of the mayor, this council, the police force, and the citizens of Issaquah to be united on how to confront this problem. And we need the leadership of this council to get the message to the citizens and criminals alike that crime will not be tolerated in Issaquah. Thank you very much for your time.
Nicole, thank you for coming in and sharing your story tonight. That's really tough to listen to. If you are still staying around at the meeting, I have asked our city administrator to provide some additional information during the mayor's report. But if not, you can follow us on TV or catch up on YouTube. But there have been some action-taking. We'd like to give a little bit more information out to the public. Thank you so much for sharing your story tonight. City Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up for comment or anyone else indicating a desire to talk to their city council?
Mayor, no one else has signed up, but I do see some other members of the public have joined us tonight. If anyone would like to make comments, please press star three if you've dialed in by phone or press the raised hand icon, or you're also welcome to send me the hosted chat. And I'll just monitor this for a moment. And I'm not seeing anyone else indicated a desire to speak.
Thank you, Tisha. So I want to-
Mayor, I'm so sorry. Just as I made that statement, I do see that we have a member of the public, Susan Neville, who was having some technical issues but would like to make comments.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Great. Susan, I will make you a panelist now. You should then see the option to unmute and can also choose to turn your video on.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Sorry about that issue. Thank you, council members and Mayor Polly, for being here this evening. I would like to address Agenda Bill 821, the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee. And as a member of the community, I've been following the land use code change process since May, and I applaud all the work the Ad Hoc Committee has devoted to this process. But I am in full support of the proposal to eliminate the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee. And as noted by the community and staff, one of the big concerns is increasing public transparency, but without adding any extra administrative support, and I believe this option works the best. In addition, the Title 18 change issues of importance, we go directly to the city council work sessions, which are public and very inclusive. And I really want to say I am very grateful to the Ad Hoc Committee for creating a strong framework to begin the Title 18 process, but adopting this new approach to eliminate the committee would be in the interest of all, and that would be the administration, the various committees, all the council members, and the public. And I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. City Clerk, is there anyone else who's indicated a desire to speak?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much for both of all those residents who came in to speak this evening. First, on crime issues in Issaquah, the need for additional deterrence and the need for a focused plan on how to proceed. Also, comments on the Title 18 ad hoc, grateful for their work and believing their work is wrapped up and recommends having future work done at study sessions. So thank you both for coming in to talk this evening. Just anybody else who might be watching or watching on video, I want to remind you all that you can write comments at any time to your city council at citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. Council President Hunt, I'd like to take the opportunity right now to see if you have any email comments that you wish to summarize on tonight's agenda topics.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one email comment that is specific to tonight's agenda items. And while we've been having virtual meetings, I've been summarizing those email comments. That comment was regarding AB 8291 Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee. The residents spoke to a preference for focused council committees, also spoke to the benefits of sending items to council work sessions and dissolving the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee. And that was the only comment that specifically referenced tonight's item. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. So we will now move on to committee and regional reports, and let's start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. I have a somewhat lengthy report tonight, so apologies to the council in advance. So first off, last Wednesday, I attended an Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting. Significant agenda items included moving forward with a contract to provide interim fire administrative services to the city of Mercer Island, reviewing the board's draft legislative agenda for the 2022 legislative session, a briefing on the progress of EFER's PFOS committee, and a briefing on EFER's new Narcan Leave Behind Kit Pilot Program that will begin soon. And there are just two things that I want to highlight for the council because I think that they're important for Issaquah to know. First, with regard to PFOS, we've been officially notified by the state that PFOS is now categorized as a hazardous substance, meaning we'll be expected to follow what's called the Model Toxics Control Act, or MACHA, in our mitigation work. So we're just beginning to get into what that means with our attorneys, but one outcome is that we'll have access to new MACHA-specific grant funding opportunities that we didn't have available to us in the past. So that's interesting to note. I was also really impressed and moved by the staff presentation on our new Naloxone or Narcan Leave Behind Kit Pilot Program. So just some data I want to run by you all that I thought was interesting to note. In 2020, the number of overdose deaths involving fentanyl in King County was 171. And as of last week, the number of overdose deaths this year was already at 282. 100 more, and we haven't even finished out the calendar year. So this obviously highlighted an emergent and large need in King County, and EFER is stepping up for the plate. So this Leave Behind Pilot Program was modeled after successful pilot programs, both in Tacoma and in Maryland, in the state of Maryland. And EFER will now be the only fire department in King County to be working in this specific Leave Behind space. So what does that mean? So essentially, Narcon kits, Narcan kits, will be on every frontline EFER unit. And after responding to an overdose call, kits will be offered to surviving patients, bystanders, and family members. And those kits will also include information on how to connect with substance use prevention resources. But the really amazing thing that they mentioned to the board was that in Maryland, studies show that the kits that were left behind with families of surviving individuals led to a five-times greater likelihood that that individual would seek treatment and recovery services. So that's pretty outstanding. So after a year, we'll evaluate our data and consider future programming, like potentially providing Narcan kits for city halls, libraries, or other public spaces. But I wanted to make sure everyone here knew about this exciting program and also the active leadership from EFER in our community. Next up for the next meeting of the Growth Management Planning Council's Affordable Housing Committee is this Wednesday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. over Zoom. Some significant agenda items include adopting the committee's legislative agenda for the 2022 legislative session in Olympia. We're going to get a briefing on the housing chapter of the countywide planning policies. And then we're going to have a discussion about drafting what they're calling a challenge letter to jurisdictions regarding the 2024 comprehensive plan update cycle and the opportunity that it presents localities to scale up their response to the affordable housing crisis in the region. So I think that this last topic in particular will be really interesting to bring back to the council, the mayor, and the administration, so stay tuned for my notes and comments from that discussion. And then the next meeting of the Cascade Water Alliance Board is also this Wednesday, but from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m. over Zoom. The most significant agenda item includes a discussion about the proposed Water Supply Development Fund, which we discussed here at a study session earlier this year. But Mayor Polly and I did want to give you all a heads up that there are some evolving issues around, from other Cascade partners regarding this fund. And after our Wednesday discussion, it's possible we may return to inform you about an updated approach. So stay tuned on how that plays out. And then the last thing I just wanted to say with broader reports is this week, I am attending the National League of Cities City Summit, which is a week-long, like, virtual summit of city council members and mayors from across the country. So I'm hoping to take notes on interesting things that might be, we want to bring back here to Issaquah, and I'll be sure to share that all with you when it's finished. And that concludes my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. On Thursday, November 4th, I attended the Healthier Here Governing Board, and we had a discussion about a new movie entitled Power to Heal. This movie documents a decades-long efforts to integrate hospital services and staff in the United States, culminating in the introduction of Medicare during the Johnson administration. President Johnson declared that Medicare reimbursement funding would only be provided to hospitals that convincingly demonstrated that they were integrated, and thus, within a single year, nearly 90% of U.S. hospitals integrated both staff and patient services. The movie's producer, Barbara Bernie, was our guest speaker, and it was a fascinating discussion about a history of our medical services that very few people know. And if you can catch that movie on Netflix, again, it's called The Power to Heal. It's very well worth watching. And then on Friday, November 12th, last Friday, I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership, and we had a presentation on the K4C Climate Action Plan items related to transportation, a presentation on the electrification of Metro's bus fleet, and the placement of electric vehicle charging stations in the Puget Sound region. And then finally, a presentation from Washington State University's Green Washington Program. And that program is working with the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction to begin the dialogue about the electrification of school bus fleets. So it was a very informative meeting with lots of, lots of good information. And then finally, tomorrow, at tomorrow afternoon, there will be a Connect to Community meeting that I'll be attending. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Councilmember Walsh, seeing you're having some connectivity issues, so if we lose you during your updates, I'll come back to you, but it is your turn. So let's, let's try.
Thanks. I didn't know I was having issues, so I appreciate you mentioning. I thought it was all on your guys' side. I have a really short report in that this Friday, the 19th, I will attend the Issaquah Chamber of Commerce meeting representing council, and no agenda has been released yet, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. My report is short as well. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will meet this Thursday on the 18th at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. I do not have an agenda yet. It is a virtual meeting, so anybody who's interested can check the city calendar and join that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Marks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Marks. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board met on Thursday, November 3rd from 10:00 until noon. We did not have any action items discussed or contemplated. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee did not meet in November because it's November. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Marks. Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. And Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one report and one upcoming meeting. The Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee, which is, Title 18 is our municipal land use code. The Title 18 Land Use Committee met on November 10th, 2021, and we started the meeting at 4:15. The attendees were Andrea Snyder, Minnie Deliwal, and Lucy Sloman from the city's staff. And then council attendees were councilmembers Goodman, Walsh, and Hunt, who are the three members of the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee. We had three topics. The topic one was code amendments for the TOD project. Specifically, we discussed, the discussion was limited to whether these can or should be processed on a separate schedule and track than the comprehensive Title 18 update. Per Resolution 2021-06, the Ad Hoc Committee will make a recommendation to the council before any topics within Title 18 scope of work will be placed on a separate scheduled track, which is why we were talking about this. And the council members on the committee agreed that, in our opinion, this topic does meet the criteria for considering it on a separate track. Those committee, those criteria are public, and we are now making that recommendation to the council that this be on a separate track. This presentation and committee comments took about 20 minutes. Then topic two was the Sign Code. There were some minor edits that are needed to different sections of the Sign Code. These were identified by the code publishing, the people that publish the code, and we unanimously agreed that, in our opinion, these changes are not substantive and are basically housekeeping and are appropriate for being on the consent agenda where they are this evening. So they are on our consent agenda as item J. And this topic took about 10 minutes. And then topic three, Andrea described the agenda bill that will be on tonight's agenda this evening regarding the future of the Ad Hoc Committee. This is regular business, item C on our agenda. And the committee received this information. We didn't, we knew that this was coming to council, so council will discuss it this evening. Looking forward to hearing that discussion. That topic took about five minutes, and the committee adjourned 10 minutes before 5:00 p.m. We do not have any upcoming meetings scheduled. The November 25th meeting of the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee is canceled due to the holiday, and there are no other meetings for 2021 for this committee that have been scheduled as of today. And then I have one upcoming meeting, the Riot Examen Recovery Council meeting will be this Thursday on the 18th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. The next item on the agenda this evening is the mayor's report, and I would like the city administrator to come on camera for a bit and talk about, we heard from Nicole Miller during public comments this evening about her encounters with theft in Issaquah and her observations about what's going on. And she also had four questions for the council, which I think will be a little staff assignment for council president and to work on to make sure we get those questions answered and sent back out in writing. But this has been an ongoing issue over the last eight weeks and has been reported by numerous residents. And I wonder if you could take this opportunity to provide the community with information on what has been going on and what steps have been taken in the last little while. City Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. Yes, unfortunately, we have seen a rash of shoplifting at some of our large national retailers. We have spoken, the police department has spoken with those national retailers, and we've learned a lot. We've learned that mostly national retailers have a much higher tolerance of this kind of activity than I think any of us would likely imagine. And the reasons for it, as you learned about them, kind of makes sense, that they are first and foremost concerned about the safety of their employees and of their customers, and their general direction to their local store managers from their regional and national offices are not to confront shoplifters. We, of course, are concerned by this as a community because, as the public speaker mentioned, there has been a rash of this. And so Mayor Polly and our police chief have met with regional leaders of at least one of those national retailers, Target, and really have expressed the concern that while they may have policies that work regionally and nationally under particular circumstances here in Issaquah, you know, they need to call 911 and they need to file charges if individuals are apprehended with stolen goods. The stores have been very reluctant in the past to do that, and I think, as the public speaker had mentioned, she witnessed this firsthand. We continue to work with Target. We have been called now by Target management. We have confronted individuals. We have arrested individuals. So that is now happening. Unfortunately, because those national chains have to weigh the safety of their employees and their customers, they see this as largely a cost of doing business. Certainly, what we're seeing, however, in Issaquah is beyond that, and I think we've been getting some good cooperation from the national retailers against Target on this. And so, Madam Mayor, if I maybe just quickly go through the four questions that may save having to provide answers in writing, you know, first was, are we concerned? And the answer is, of course, we're concerned. But it's important for everyone to remember that for a crime to happen, there has to be a complaint. The property that's being stolen, the owner of that property, in the case of a retail store, the management of that store has to be willing to file charges. If they're unwilling to file charges, there is nothing the police can, can do. There's no arrest that can be made. Certainly, when a police officer arrives at a store and confronts an individual, many times, that individual very smartly says yes and leaves the property and leaves the premises. And so the issue is taken care of. But, you know, an arrest cannot be made unless there is a complaint filed, and that, and that has not happened, but it's happening more now with our national retailers. So certainly, we are concerned. Second question, do we know how much crime is occurring in Issaquah? You know, that, that's a difficult question on any day. We certainly encourage people to call 911 always. If they feel that there's a crime in progress, if they've had a property crime, we want them to call. We want to be able to file the report. We want to be able to gather information. That is a longstanding policy of the Issaquah Police Department, and we want people to do that. Have some individuals taken this as a cost of doing business? Have some individuals taken this as a cost of doing business? If you have an Amazon package lifted from your porch, do people every time call the police department? My guess is probably not. Again, we would encourage people to do that. It's important that we understand what these trends are. It's important for our officers to investigate because we do find people, we do arrest people, and that is a great deterrent. If people don't report these crimes, that makes it very difficult for us to enforce. The next question regarding allowing an underground market, you know, that's probably something beyond our, our ability to, to regulate. Individuals take property and do things with it outside the jurisdiction, and it's very difficult for us to manage that. Again, as we've said, we're certainly aware this is going on. We're working closely with those businesses to make sure that, that, that's taken care of. And then finally, why aren't police making an arrest just because they see someone go down the street with a basket full of televisions? Again, we need to have someone that's be able to press charges. We are often able to engage with the individual, and that engagement oftentimes will lead to that person either leaving the material as we find it, or we then return that material. Other times, they will say, I bought it, and move on. And so our police officers have limited ability beyond that again, unless the store is prepared to, to enforce that. So we are taking this very seriously. We are taking steps. I really commend our acting chief, Paul Schwan. She's been very aggressive in working with those national retailers. She has instructed our officers to respond to every single call that is received, and if we are able to do something without charges being filed, we can. And certainly, the information that I've heard and I've also seen on social media, and many of you may have as well, individuals in the community who have seen our police officers confront individuals leaving the store, and those, and those individuals then decide not to take the goods. So it's a complicated situation. We're going to continue to be aggressive. Madam Mayor, I hope, I think that answers the question of the public commenter, and hopefully that covers the issue.
Thank you, Wal. I just want to add one personal note from the mayor is that I have reached out to Economic Development staff and to our police force and said that I am willing to participate in any conversation where the story or the, the reason we're coming up against is because it's a corporate policy. I think Isqwa's an amazing place. I think the businesses we have here are amazing, but it's not acceptable to have a corporate policy that allows this kind of activity to occur, and that's been my message, and it will continue to be my message. So I want to thank not only Nicole for coming and sharing her story tonight, but I have spoken to a dozen other folks who have provided anecdotal information, or called the police, or made observations, and I appreciate that. Eyes on the street is what we need. And as our city administrator said, please, please, if you see something, say something. Sometimes we can connect the dots because three of you are calling about the same thing, and it, it helps. Everything that you can do to help us is so much appreciated, but also thank you so much for keeping your eyes on our wonderful community. I appreciate it. I'm going to move on to the mayor's report for this evening, as soon as I find it. There it is. There will not be an executive session scheduled this evening. There is no executive session scheduled this evening. They'd want to talk a little bit about some weather-related events because we're at that time of year. I wanted to thank our staff and partner agencies for their efforts that, over Veterans Day and over the weekend and into today, in response to various weather-related events. And again, thank you to emergency management, our communications team, Public Works, police, parks and community services, Eastside Fire and Rescue, and King County Emergency Management. Last week, the House passed the largest infrastructure bill in American history, which will invest 1.2 trillion over 10 years. Much of this funding will be provided to cities and states through competitive grants, and this bill will help Isqwa continue to build, renew, and plan our infrastructure for the future. The Capital Finance Community Task Force last met on November 2nd to discuss infrastructure priorities across Isqwa's needs in transportation, parks and trail, and facilities. The task force will continue to develop its recommendations and priority, on priorities at the next meeting, which is tomorrow, November 16th at 6:00 p.m. And the City of Isqwa's Community Emergency Response Team, or also known as CERT, provided 26 volunteers and 159 hours of support to the children vaccination sites sponsored by Costco and the Isqwa School District. The CERT volunteers helped with reception and attestation, check-in areas, line control management, recovery room, and giddy bag handout. At this recent multi-day event, approximately 2,300 children between the ages of five and 12 received their first dose of the COVID-19 vaccine, and a second dose is scheduled in early December. We are so grateful for the work of our CERT volunteers, their high energy, professionalism, and enthusiasm was noticed by our partners. Thank you again, all CERT members, for your outstanding contribution to our community. There are a couple of upcoming events. There is a virtual job fair. Isqwa is partnering with WorkSource, Seattle, King County, and other eastside cities to bring a virtual job fair to the eastside on November 18th from 10 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And you can visit the City of Isqwa's event page to learn more and register at isqwa.gov/jobfair. And registration has opened for the Isqwa Food Bank's annual turkey trot. Multiple courses are available throughout the weekend of November 25th to 28th to allow for social distancing. You can learn more and register at isqwaturkeytrot.org. And that concludes the mayor's report. The next item on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar, and the calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on this consent calendar will be considered together and approved in one motion. I'm going to ask Councilmember De Michelle if she needs to make a statement before we move on with the vote.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I do indeed need to make a statement. I would like to state for the record that I am currently employed within entity that is included in the city's payables, Influence of Choice. I currently fill the role of temporary executive director of Influence of Choice. Although that position has come to an end, I am still receiving payments. The city serves as a fiscal agent for this agency in the dispersment of a federal grant. Grant funds are being dispersed under this month's accounts payable. I have asked for advice from the city attorney as to whether this warrants a conflict of interest, and have been informed that I am not legally required to be excused from voting as the city is carrying out a decision that was previously made by the council. However, for the sake of transparency, I would like to declare this employment and have my statement entered in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you very much. Does any council member desire to remove any items from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? And if so, can you please indicate in the chat? Keep my eye on the chat. I'm not seeing anyone registering that they would like to move something, and so Council President Hunt for a motion?
Thank you. I move to approve the consent calendar as it appears in this evening's agenda.
Thank you. And Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
Thank you both. It's been moved and seconded to approve as submitted. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, starting with Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mertz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. The next item of business this evening is a public hearing, AB 8198, which is the proposed 2022 budget and salary ordinance. The action this evening will be to conduct the public hearing and to adopt the ordinances. This item came before council at the October 4th council meeting for the first public hearing and was deliberated at council study sessions on October 12th, 26th, and November 9th. And I'd like to invite interim finance director Autumn Monahan to present this item. Autumn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. All right, so tonight is the second public hearing on our proposed 2022 budget, along with the proposed adoption of the budget and salary ordinances. So RCW requires cities to hold two public hearings prior to adopting the budget. The preliminary public hearing was on October 4th, and the final public hearing is this evening. Here is our timeline that we've seen throughout the budget process, and we are at the end on November 15th. A quick overview of the budget, the 2022 proposed budget now totals $149.3 million. The largest fund of the city is the general fund. It's also the most flexible. This is where the city accounts for most of its day-to-day government services, such as public safety and parks and community services. The 2022 proposed general fund totals $62.8 million. The proposed budget adds 18.5 FTEs and reclassifies others. The 2021 adopted budget had us at 250 FTEs, right around our post-recession minimum of 250 back in 2016. And the 2022 proposed budget brings us back up to 269, though that's still below our pre-pandemic maximum of 285 and below the pre-recession maximum of 278. Following deliberations as well as updates to the forecasts during our budget season, there were several adjustments made to the proposed budget, including some increases to several general fund revenues, the addition of the police communications coordinator as a limited-term position, the reduction of employee medical premium costs, the partial payoff of the Burghsma debt, and the reduction of the proposed one-time investment fund from 1.25 million to $300,000, and that money would be allocated for employees who served during the pandemic, with the rest of those funds going back into the, to the ending fund balance. So following those adjustments, the total undisputed fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is now at 18% for next year. And that concludes my brief presentation. I'm here to answer any questions before the public hearing.
Thank you, Autumn. Does council have any questions before I open the public hearing? And I will keep an eye on the chat before I do that. I'm not seeing any questions, so I will open the public hearing at 7:42 p.m. For those of you who have joined us tonight and would like to make some comments but did not sign up in advance, please raise your virtual hand. As I said earlier, you could do this on your phone by pressing star 3. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak?
Yes, Steve Pereira would like to make a comment. Steve, in just a moment, I'll make you a panelist. You'll then have the option to unmute and can also turn your video on. You have the floor.
Welcome, Steve. We can't hear you. Oh, there you go.
I don't know that I see it in the current budget proposal, so I apologize if it might be a little bit out of date. Initial budget, first of all, I think sending input, I stand by that. I don't want to talk about what it already talked about. Talk about what I understood.
Steve? Excuse me? Steve, this is Tisha. It's... Steve? This is Tisha. It's difficult to hear you. I'd actually suggest turning your video off if you can and speaking a little louder.
What?
It's a little hard to hear you. I think the internet is struggling, so I turn your camera off. If you can, it'll give you some more bandwidth, and then if you could speak up a little louder.
Okay, I'm turning my video off. I don't know if that helps any with the connection.
It helps a lot. Thank you.
Sure. So as I was saying, I previously based these comments on the initial budget that came out, so this may be a little bit out of date, so I apologize if that's the case. In the initial budget, though, there was a proposal to reduce city staffing for the city's streets management and have that outsourced. My concern with that is, I guess, twofold. One is in context of city staff headcount numbers, that we seem to be increasing city staff from professional services to, you know, streets, streetscape, but also we talked about writing a one-time staffing budget for $20,000, so it's temporary. Thank you, city staff. At the same time, we're outsourcing city staff. That concerns me as well, so there seems to be maybe a possible understanding. Some may think that this is just a city administration issue and not a city policy issue, and therefore not an issue for city council. That is clear to me. If city council doesn't weigh in on that decision, if there's a decision, is what reducing city staff or city street upkeep in whichever department you pick it? So I would ask city's council to review and consider, we're saying no staffing positions if that is indeed proposed to reduce city staffing for that function. That's pretty much the gist of my input at this point. Thank you for your time and service. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you for participating throughout our budget process. City Clerk, is there anyone else signed up or indicating a desire to speak during the public hearing?
Mayor, I don't see that anyone else wishes to speak.
Is there any objection to closing the public hearing? I'll keep an eye on the chat. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed at 7:47 p.m. And we are looking to see if somebody is ready to prepare a motion. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance number 2961, adopting the 2022 budget setting forth the estimated revenues and appropriations for each separate fund and estimated impact on ending fund balances for all such funds combined of the city for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2022, and establishing an effective date, and adopt ordinance number 2962, adopting a 2022 salary schedule for all city employees.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? And again, I'll just keep my eye on the chat. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. Very briefly, Councilmember Mertz spoke to this at our last study session on this topic, but I think this has been a smooth budget process, and you have been able to incorporate the comments, including the early comments from council into the budget. So I appreciate that, and just wanted to express my appreciation. Also, there is, for council, there is a budget letter. This is the first time that council will have, have that budget letter because it was written after the study session and between, between the study session and this meeting. I reviewed our past meeting minutes, meeting notes, and also the last conversations that we had when council members indicated what they thought should be in the letter. And then I also looked at our last letter and followed up on any items that were remaining that were policy direction from last year. So I, I, and then lastly, just process-wise, we also, I also reviewed it with council deputy president Ray and worked with Autumn as far as tracking down the information from that last budget letter. So appreciate all of their help with it, and hopefully it meets council's intent, and if not, I am open to hearing proposed changes. And thanks again for all the work from council on the budget this year.
Thank you, Council President Hunt, and thank you for your work on the letter. Let's move to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Walsh. I similarly wanted to give some appreciation to the administration on how smooth of a budget cycle this has been, and particularly some kudos and props to the interim finance director and the team that just picked things up and moved them forward, and I'm sure there were many long... And I'm sure there were many long hours, weekends, nights that we didn't get a chance to see that. I do want to appreciate for just making this a smooth budget process despite all of the changes in employment. And so just kudos to the team there as well. So thank you.
Very much appreciated, council member Walsh. Council member De Michele.
So I'm just thurting everybody's comments and just want to be sure that I got my voice in and appreciation to the staff and the administration as well. It's, I, this is my second budget process, and so I think I'm getting very spoiled because it was a very good process last year and now I'm hearing that this is the best process that's ever been. And so I think it's been great. I want to commend, I think that people listen very, very well and I enjoyed the discussions we had. And the changes that were made, I think, reflected the comments from the council. And I just, I think that is part of why it has been such a very productive process and such a satisfying process. So I will be happy to support this budget in adoption. So thanks to everybody. And again, uber kudos to the staff for an excellent job.
Thank you, council member De Michele. I think there are a few vacations planned that I'm aware of. Council member Goodman.
Thank you, council member Goodman here. So I, I feel the same and all the comments that are made so thus far. And not only was it smooth, but I would like to add some time periods to it. Not only is it the, my word, best budget process we've had in all my years on council, it's also the best budget process that I have been attending since, including my nine years on council. So that's, I counted, it's either 19 or 20 years. So I would like to, and as tedious as it is sometimes sitting in these meetings, I sat in on nine of them in the audience and that is incredibly tedious. So this is actually more fun than sitting around going, oh, if I could just say something. So anyway, it's just been great and I want to commend the mayor for just the very significant improvements that have been made in the budget process in the past four years. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Goodman. Very generous. The council's been fantastic about providing feedback and I think that's why we end up where we do. So thank you all for that. Not seeing any more comments and because it's been a few minutes, I am going to move back up in the chat and reread the motion. The motion is to adopt ordinance number 2961, adopting the 2022 budget, setting forth the estimated revenues and appropriations for each separate fund and estimated impact on ending fund balances for all such funds combined of the city for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2022, and establishing an effective date, and adopt ordinance number 2962, adopting a 2022 salary schedule for all city employees. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, starting with council member De Michele.
Aye.
Council member Goodman.
Aye.
Council member Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Council member Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Council member Walsh.
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
Thank you, city clerk. That passes unanimously. Very excited to be able to go and tell my fellow mayors about the amazing work that you all have done here. The next item under regular business is AB 82. Oh, sorry, I have a comment here. City Administrator Bob Kowitz.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If you'll just allow me a moment, first let me thank all of you for your patience, your regular comments, your questions that you've had. You made this process from a staff's perspective great because you were willing at the very front end to get involved, to make your desires known. And I think quite honestly, the strategic plan gets a vote of thanks because the strategic plan had a very specific process that this was the first year we had an opportunity to follow. And so thank you to the council for that. We've had an interim finance director. You think back to all of the challenges that the community has had with budgets. Many of you have said this is the best budget you've ever seen, led by a team with an interim finance director in Autumn Monahan. Autumn is an exceptional professional and I knew that Beth was going to be leaving, spoke with mayor, and I was only one person that I had in mind that could lead this process and that was Autumn Monahan. She has such good experience working with all of the principals here in the city. She has seen a lot. She also has a tremendous, tremendous judgment and I think was able to step into something she's never done before, lead an excellent team. The finance staff is truly an excellent team. And I just want to say thank you, Autumn. You didn't hesitate, maybe a little hesitation, but not much hesitation to take this on. And so I appreciate that very much. Lots of folks in the city worked on the budget, but I really need to recognize two additional staff members. Dale Markey Crim, who joined us at the beginning of the process, provided lots of support with the details. But there's really one additional person that I think we must recognize and that's the interim budget manager, Suzie Montcel. Suzie had the pleasure of doing the capital improvement program, turned around, had Beth announce her departure, and then had the task of really being the staff lead with the operating budget this year. So my thanks to Suzie, she's a remarkable individual. She works extraordinarily hard. While I think many, many people were involved and through Autumn's excellent leadership, Suzie gets a lot of the credit for making sure that the documents and the completeness of the answers to all of your questions came at the time that they did. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, let me again thank Autumn, Dale, and especially Suzie Montcel for their excellent work. It's our pleasure to provide a budget that is complete and transparent so that the community knows how their money is being spent, how that's aligned with strategic plan. I'm also happy to announce that we have selected and appointed a new finance director. And so that individual will get a proper introduction here in a couple of weeks. Will be able to lead this great team and will allow Autumn to transition to a brand-new position within the city and that's as our Director of Administrative Services. So again, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your support through this process and thank you for letting me take a few minutes to recognize a truly outstanding team that worked on this year's budget.
Thank you, city administrator Bob Kowitz. Lots of kudos all around, council and staff. Fabulous job this year. You did omit one thing and that is that Suzie is also our local baker and she brought in her own homemade macaroons today. So nice to work in the office building sometimes and get those treats. So she's a fabulous, fabulous baker. So thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to the next item, 8A, regular business, AB 8241. News to the attorney appointment and contract for services with Madrona Law Group. The action, requested action before council this evening is to confirm and authorize. And I would like to invite city administrator Wally Bobkowitz to present this item to the administrator.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am pleased to present this evening to the council the mayor's recommendation for the appointment of Rachel Turpin as the new city attorney. Rachel's here and you see her, boy, it's daytime wherever she's sitting. But we're happy to have Rachel here. We provided her background with the Madrona Law Group in the packet. Would ask, Madam Mayor, if I may, just to let Rachel say a few words. And then the requested action before the council is to authorize an agreement that would begin November 1st to allow some onboarding time and then Rachel's appointment as the city attorney beginning on January 1st.
Thank you, city administrator Bob Kowitz, of course. Welcome, Rachel.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council members, city administrator and staff. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name is Rachel Turpin and I am an attorney with Madrona Law Group, a local municipal law firm. I've been practicing municipal law for almost 14 years and I genuinely love what I do, which is why I'm very excited and honored to have been selected to serve the city of Issaquah as your city attorney. I am very familiar with the city of Issaquah. I actually worked in Old Town for over 10 years. So it is a charming city that I am looking very, very much forward to serving and I'm very much looking forward to working with each and every one of you. So please let me know if you have any questions, but otherwise I can't wait to get to work and be a part of your team, helping the city do all of the great things that you're working on.
Thank you, Rachel, and welcome.
Thanks.
I'm not seeing that there are any questions or comments in the chat, so I'd be looking to see if there's anyone interested in making a motion. Council President Hunt.
Thanks. I authorize, I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the contract for city attorney services with Madrona Law Group effective November 1st, 2021, and confirm the appointment of Ms. Turpin as city attorney effective January 1st, 2022.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Second.
Thank you both. It has been moved and seconded. Going to keep an eye on the chat to see if there is any council discussion before we consider a vote. I'll give it a few seconds. Council member Goodman.
Thank you. Council member Goodman here. So in a moment, we'll vote on this one, a new city attorney and welcome, Madrona Law Group. But I just didn't want this moment to go by without at least publicly stating my appreciation for decades-long service that Ogden Murphy Wallace and Wayne Tanaka and Jim Haney have provided to our city. It's just been a very long time and it's a big change and I just wanted to thank them for their service.
Very appropriate. Thank you, council member Goodman. I give it another second to see if there are any additional comments. And seeing none, I will reread the motion. It was moved to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the contract for city attorney services with Madrona Law Group effective November 1st, 2021, and confirm the appointment of Ms. Turpin as city attorney effective January 1st, 2022. City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Yes, starting with council member Goodman.
Aye.
Council member Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Council member Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Council member Walsh.
Aye.
Council member De Michele.
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
Thank you, city clerk. That passes unanimously. And welcome, Rachel.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to be here and I will see you all again in next year, 2022.
Oh, my gosh. It's that close? Okay.
It's very close.
Hey, okay. The next item on our agenda this evening is AB 8265. It is the 2022 legislative agenda. This item was last before council at the October 26th, 2021 council study session. And I would like to invite Chief of Staff Tina Eggers and Senior Governmental Affairs Consultant Shelley Helder to present this item. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. Tina Eggers speaking. I'm pleased to be here this evening. Jean Paul is absent. He is traveling and unable to attend tonight. And just confirming that you can see what's on my screen?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, thank you. Tonight, we're going to just look back briefly at the direction that you provided at the October 26th study session. And we ask for your approval of the legislative agenda, excuse me, the legislative agenda that is provided in your packet. For background, your legislative agenda is made of two parts. The first being the legislative priorities. This section highlights two projects as part of the transportation funding package, specifically the widening of state Route 18 from Issaquah-Hobart to Raging River and an additional Interstate 90 under over crossing. The second component of the legislative agenda is the policy manual. This document was revised to remove or update items that were accomplished in the 2021 legislative session such as streamlined sales tax mitigation, multi-family property tax exemption, pension contribution, tax increment financing, and arts law funding requests. In addition, statements were added in response to what was passed in 2021 sessions such as providing clarification on police reform policies, funding for diversion-related activities, and Open Public Meetings Act for flexibility during emergencies. At this point, I'll ask our lobbyist, Shelley Helder, to speak to the next slides and recap the additional changes to the policy manual. Shelley?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I am Shelley Helder, the city's government affairs consultant, and I'm going to review the changes that have been made to the policy manual based on the feedback that was received during the October 26th study session. So there are three changes, one substantive and two non-substantive changes. For the first change, we added a statement of support for unanticipated state marijuana revenues to be dedicated to youth substance abuse and prevention programs. The two non-substantive changes were merging two existing statements for simplification and those changes were made in the environment section and in the water section. During the study session, council requested more information on three topics which are listed on the screen. I'm going to provide some brief comments on the first two since they're not connected to a recommended change in the policy manual. And then we'll dive a little bit deeper into the third. On the first topic of zoning and equity, there was a question raised about how zoning practices are connected to equity. And this is a complex policy discussion that's happening at the national and the state level about how historic zoning and land use decisions have had inequitable impacts on certain communities. And there's somewhat, I would argue, of a false narrative being presented. And that is if the state implements certain land use policies, for example, requiring accessory dwelling units on all lots, that that will result in more ADUs being built and more equity. But there are communities that allow ADUs on every lot and ADUs aren't being built in the quantity anticipated. And that's just one example based on previous legislation that we've seen introduced. And there's much more to land use planning than simply changing the allowable uses for certain zones. So if equity is the goal, then that needs to be incorporated into the planning policies. So this is, I think, a topic that warrants a thoughtful conversation with the community. And again, is not recommended for any change to the policy manual at this time. The second question was about school siting and specifically if there were any plans for amendments to the Growth Management Act to accommodate school siting. And I just want to note that the GMA does not prohibit the siting of schools outside the urban growth area, but it does limit the extension of certain utilities outside the UGA, thereby making it difficult to sit outside. There was an amendment to address this issue several years ago, but it was very narrowly crafted to apply only to Pierce County. And I did some sleuthing and I am not aware of any plans to bring forward legislation on school siting in the 2022 legislative session. And so there's not any recommendation for any change to the policy manual to address that topic. The third area where more information was requested was climate change and the Growth Management Act, specifically what the implications are for the city if House Bill 1099 were to pass into law. Next slide. So House Bill 1099 was introduced in the 2021 session and it advanced nearly all the way through the process but ran out of time at the end in the Senate. So it will be automatically reintroduced in the 2022 session. And many legislators have already indicated a desire to see it get across the finish line. The bill adds climate change as a goal of the Growth Management Act and would require cities to add climate change resiliency as an element to comprehensive plans. So Issaquah has already done. So Issaquah has already done much of the planning work that would be required for House Bill 1099. And it's reflected in the city's draft climate action plan. For cities that have not yet done this planning work, the bill would require them to do so. And there's a common understanding that there would be funding provided along with the bill. It's not written into the bill itself, but there's an expectation that funding would accompany the bill's passage because otherwise it would be considered an unfunded mandate. Since Issaquah has essentially fulfilled the planning requirements of House Bill 1099, the city's support of this bill would communicate an importance for all GMA cities to adopt climate action plans or the equivalent as it's being referenced in the bill. And it would also be an opportunity to highlight the need for state funding for implementation of local climate action plans. As many of you know, the Climate Commitment Act is anticipated to generate revenue for tackling climate change and promoting resilience. But there is no statutory designation for funding or implementation of local climate action plans. So that is something that we could call attention to. Next slide. The direction that's needed from council is whether we should include a statement on climate change and the GMA in the city's policy manual. So a draft statement for the council to consider is on the screen and it says, "Issaquah supports updates to the Growth Management Act that align with the city's climate action plan as outlined in House Bill 1099, as well as funding to implement mitigation actions." And I'm going to pause here for council discussion and then have a few more comments to make before we wrap up the presentation.
Thank you, Shelley. Comments from council members on the draft, the inclusion of the draft statement that Shelley's recommended up on the PowerPoint? Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I raised this at our city session. I appreciate the information that's been provided. My, I, I am, there is an optional amendment, so I think I'll save my comments. I plan on making the optional amendment, at least for council discussion. So yeah, I think it would probably be more appropriate to comment once there's a motion on the table. But I just also wanted to say thank you for following up with this information.
That's great. Any other comments? I just have a procedural question for Shelley. I'm assuming since the current manual does not include the statement that what you have on the screen is a potential draft motion. If one of the council members would like to do that, because I am not seeing that that is included in the motions that are in our packet. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, it's not included. So we would be looking for council to make that motion to have it included if they so choose.
Thank you. And I'm also not seeing that anybody else is requesting a comment time. So if you want to continue, that would be great.
Great. Okay. So as I've previously mentioned, the city's policy manual is a reference document. And that's helpful for city staff and for myself as your lobbyist to weigh in in support or opposition to policies as they're considered during a legislative session. And although we aim for the document to be comprehensive, it's likely not exhaustive. So I want to just briefly review what our firm recommends as best practices for cities to engage if there's a bill or a policy that comes up during the session that's not directly aligned with a statement that is already in the policy manual. First, I'll just say that consensus is always the goal. As far as I'm aware, the documents before you this evening reflect the consensus of council. And that is important to be able to speak with a unified voice and to be an effective advocate. If we as a city are divided, it's not likely that we'll get our local legislators' support, much less legislators that are outside our region. And then second, it's important that any city position, state policies, also align with city goals and any previously identified priorities. We wouldn't want to support a proposed state policy that conflicts with anything that the city has already identified as a priority, that especially something that has input from the county or from the community. So our recommended process for proposing changes is to first share any relevant information with your government affairs consultant and relevant city staff. And that's because we may have awareness of local or state politics that would be important to consider. And then after that, information should be shared with your fellow council members. And if additional discussion is needed, which may be the case, we do encourage that substantive policy discussions occur through work groups or committees when possible. And then on items where there is not consensus, our recommendation is to remain silent or neutral and allow others to engage in the debate. And that's because it harms the city's credibility and could detract from accomplishing other priorities. In the event there is consensus, then recommend that it be brought forward for the city to take a position. So next slide. This evening, we are hoping for approval for the city's legislative documents. And this is an important step to take prior to the December 1st date since we've scheduled a virtual meeting with the city's legislative delegation on Wednesday, December 1st, from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. And this is the opportunity for you all as the city's elected officials to brief the 5th and the 41st district legislators on Issaquah's priorities for the coming session. And then following the legislative meeting, the next important date is Monday, January 10th. And that's when the 2022 legislative session begins. And with that is the last slide of the presentation. And our recommendation is for approval of the city's legislative agenda.
Thank you, Shelley. Just a clarifying question here before council. Want to give council an opportunity to ask questions as well. When you talk about consensus to add a new item, I assume that means seven thumbs up on putting something in, adding something new that hadn't been in the booklet docket before. The second part to the question was, we always have council members who have issues that they independently, as a council person, but not as representative of the city, do advocacy work down in Olympia where they speak to, as a member of the council and not for the council, to a specific issue. This doesn't preclude a council member from doing that. It just means if it's added to the manual, we should have seven thumbs up. Is that a correct interpretation?
That is correct. Yes. Thank you for that clarification there. That is, that is accurate.
Okay. So before we go to the motion, I want to check in with council and see if there are any questions. So I'm keeping my eye on the chat before we go to a motion. Any questions for Shelley or Tina? Okay. Anyone prepared to make a motion? Council President Hunt.
Thank you. I move to approve the 2022 Legislative Agenda as presented.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the legislative agenda. Did you want to speak to that, Council President Hunt?
This is Council President Hunt. I, yes, I will speak to it. And I also, as I indicated earlier, I will also make the optional amendment motion. So thank you to Shelley for the information. And I think that also very important that the mayor pointed out that council members do, as part of our, as part of our enthusiasm, I think, for different, different topics, council members do choose to sometimes advocate for different items that they feel passionately about on their own behalf. And that is our prerogative. So I think it's important to point that out. I will now make the optional amendments. And that is I move to amend the policy manual by adding the following statement to the policy manual under the Land Use Growth Management Act, GMA Housing Section. Issaquah supports updates to the Growth Management Act that align with the city's climate action plan as outlined in House Bill 1099, as well as funding to implement mitigation actions.
And is there a second? Deputy Council President Ray. Sorry, I missed you.
Second.
Council President, do you want to speak to the amendment?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I'll speak briefly. I am in support of this. I think it aligns with our climate action plan, which we are about to consider for adoption next month. And so I think it aligns well with our goals and with our cities, with our community's enthusiasm for environmental protection of our natural spaces and also with our city's climate action plan. And the other reason why I think it's a good idea is because this bill and in the statement, it talks about the need for funding. So more funding for this work would help us achieve our goals. Thanks.
Deputy Council President Ray, did you want to speak to it?
If I could just have a quick second, I agree with the council president. This is very much aligned with the values and stated direction of both this council and the city as a whole. But what I'm particularly fond of is the funding to implement the action plans is not only a benefit to the city of Issaquah, but since we share this environment and we share climate change with everybody around us, making it easier for other communities to take the actions that we already have is in all of our best interest.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall here. Just real quickly to say with regard to both this amendment and the underlying motion, just as it was last year, I hope the council is comfortable with me recusing myself from this vote, just as a reminder, that as an employee of the state legislature myself, I've been advised by the state legislature that state legislative ethic guidelines ask me not to lobby the state legislature. So due to those policies, I'll be recusing myself from voting on this amendment or the underlying agenda bill. And I appreciate you all for your understanding and hopefully one year I'll be able to join you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. At this point in time, I wonder if it's appropriate to have our lobbyists provide some feedback, pro-con, about why, what the differences are between the proposed motion that was in the presentation and the proposed motion that was presented to see if there are any significant differences that the council would like to discuss or consider. Shelley?
Yes. And I was actually reading, as far as I can tell, the optional amendment is the language that was in the presentation, unless I'm mistaking something. But I think it, I think it is the same.
You could be right. You could be right. I don't have both documents open. Thanks. Limited space on my little laptop here. Council President, that is the language from the slide deck that was presented earlier?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt. But that's the amendment that is both in our packet and within the.
Okay. Thank you. Without having it, I wasn't aware if you were proposing something different. It's exactly what was there. Okay. Are there any other comments from any other council members before we vote on the amendment? And are there any comments or questions about consensus voting? And whether or not, how the council feels about that, or any comments or questions on that? Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the wisdom of our lobbyists. I always ask myself about policies around the idea of what if we didn't have such a collaborative and consensus-driven council? On a different day, I would hate to have a policy that was supported in the community and let's say six of the seven council members not move forward because there was one council member that didn't support it. So I see the value in having a strong consensus statement coming out of the council, but I wouldn't want to have that be an absolute requirement in a situation like this. Like I said, we have a, we have a very thoughtful council. But you know, some councils will have one or two members that just really want to zig where everyone else is zagging. And like I said, I don't think, I think if you got five to two or six to one in a situation like that, you might want to continue moving ahead, even if you didn't have a claim with your, with your council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I quite agree. I think as a community, the values that we as seven members represent are quite aligned at this point, but that's not always going to be the case. And I think representative government allows for some disagreement, but still presenting and putting forth, you know, a, a, not united as in the individuals voting, but a united sense of this is our community's values, which is represented in the legislative agenda. So I don't know that I feel strongly that we should be moving in the direction of just providing consensus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council President Hunt and then Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I completely agree with Councilmember Martz. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle. I had never heard that a definition of consensus as unanimity. And I just Googled it and consensus is a quote-unquote "general agreement." And that's the meaning that I've always used. And in addition, at King County, when I was with King County Department of Transportation, we used the definition of this is what we agree with or that we can live with in reaching consensus. It wasn't necessarily that we all 100% agreed, but that we could live with whatever was the issue in front of us. So I think if we can say that it's a general agreement, but not necessarily a unanimous agreement, then I think that's the definition of consensus that I am able to live with. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Councilmember De Michelle. And thank you, Shelley, for sharing practices that are occurring out in the region. I think this council is fortunate to have mostly everyone here participate in the strategic planning process. And so they have a check and balance in there with their community desires. But it is very interesting to know what practices are going on elsewhere. So thank you very much for that. Any other comments before we go to the vote? So this is a vote, and I mean, make sure, is this a vote, City Clerk, on an amendment? Or is it an amendment to the, can it be combined with the main motion to approve the 2022 Legislative Agenda and include the proposed motion that Council President?
To do it properly, we'd vote on the amendment first.
Great. Let's do that. So if you could read back the amendment?
Yes. The amendment is to amend the policy manual by adding the following statement to the policy manual under the Land Use Growth Management Act Housing Section. Issaquah supports updates to the Growth Management Act that align with the city's climate action plan as outlined in House Bill 1099, as well as funding to implement mitigation actions.
Great. Thank you very much. And that has been moved and seconded. Could you do a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Hall is recused. So starting with Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
That's six i's, zero n's.
Thank you. That passes six nothing with one recusal. That's a hard one for me. Thank you for all that discussion. And thank you, Shelley, for coming and joining us tonight, and Tina for standing in for Jean. That's great. I see Council President pointing at something. Did I not vote on the main motion? Okay, thanks. It's always good to have people watching over your shoulder. So the main motion now would be to approve the 2022 Legislative Agenda as amended? Is there any more discussion before we call for the vote? Is there any more discussion before we call for the vote? And I'll keep my eye on the chat. Okay, City Clerk? Oh, Counsel President?
Counsel Member De Michelle?
Oh, sorry, that's the last one in line, yes. Counsel Member De Michelle?
Thank you, this is Counsel Member De Michelle. Very briefly, again, I want to thank staff and the administration for listening so well. I appreciate the inclusion of the statement on unanticipated marijuana revenues, and I'm looking forward to being able to comment more on that topic in the future. So at any rate, thank you so much for listening, and thank you for including that in the, in the final document, and I will be supporting this adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Member De Michelle. I'm not seeing any other commenters, so again, the motion would be to approve the 2022 legislative agenda as amended. City Clerk, would you like to call the roll?
Starting with Counsel Member Mertz?
Aye.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Member Walsh?
Aye.
Counsel Member De Michelle?
Aye.
Counsel Member Goodman?
Aye.
Counsel Member Hall is recused, Counsel President Hunt?
Aye.
That's six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, that passes unanimously, and I'll repeat my thank yous to Shelley and Tina. Thanks for all the hard work on this, nice job. The next item of business tonight is AB 8291, Title 18 Land Use Code Ad Hoc Committee, and the recommendation before the council this evening is to discharge the ad hoc. And I'd like to invite Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder to introduce this item. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli, and good evening, members of City Council, I'm Andrea Snyder, the Deputy City Administrator. And we're really following up from direction that council provided at the November 1st meeting for the administration to return with options for how to proceed with the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee. As you may recall, there were a couple of concerns that were brought up during Good of the Order in that City Council meeting. One concern is that the way that the ad hoc committee is currently structured, that it could result in three members or a minority of City Council providing direction to the administration, that it could result in prematurely narrowing policy options presented to the Planning Policy Commission. And there was also concern that there's a lack of transparency to both members of the public and City Council. Preferences were also raised that evening to, regarding a council committee structure, and at this time, the administration recommends further discussion on the council committee structure to occur in January during the City Council Retreat. The question for tonight is how would council like to proceed with the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee? In the agenda bill provided in your packet this evening, the background discusses why the committee was formed in the first place and what tasks the committee was assigned to do by council, including a summary of the committee's accomplishments to date. And in summary, the administration believes that the ad hoc committee has accomplished most of the tasks that were assigned to them, except providing ongoing policy guidance as we progress through the Title 18 update. And we'd also like to thank the council members, that's Counsel President Hunt, Counsel Member Goodman, and Counsel Member Walsh, who are on the committee and for all their time spent over the past two years in helping this large land use code update project progress. In the agenda bill, you'll also see a couple of options to address the concerns raised by some of the members of council. The administration recommends, as the mayor indicated, disbanding the ad hoc committee at this time. Instead, the administration would provide monthly updates to council, including quarterly presentations, and would bring away, bring any issues to City Council study sessions that it would otherwise have brought to the ad hoc committee. We believe this option best addresses all of the concerns raised on November 1st. There are other options as presented in the agenda bill that include having the committee meet very similarly as it does today, but that they would not be discussing policy matters. And then the third option, as depicted in the agenda bill, is that we would have the ad hoc committee meetings continue as they have been, but that we would record those meetings and make them viewable to the public. So as far as next steps go, pending council direction this evening, the administration may need to return to council to update a resolution pertaining to the ad hocs role and any other direction that council would provide. And so at this time, I ask if there are any questions?
And if you have questions, can you please indicate in the chat? Thank you for the presentation, Andrea. Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli, and I think, I think this may have already been answered, but what is the meeting plan now going forward for the ad hoc? Just to put it in context, I mean, I was under the impression we weren't going to do anything right away, and are there any more meetings planned and scheduled, or where are we at with that?
The ad hoc committee has, it falls on a lot of holidays that are upcoming, so I don't believe there's any meetings that are currently scheduled for the ad hoc committee, just I think mostly due to the nature of the holiday schedule over the next couple of weeks.
Are there any, any meetings scheduled in the first part of next year, after the holidays? No?
I don't believe so.
Great, thank you. That was, that was my thinking, I just wanted to confirm it before I thought it.
Thank you. Looking for additional questions in the chat? And if there are no questions, looking for a motion? Oops. Okay, it jumped a little much here for me, hang on one sec. So I have two, City Clerk, I'll need your help. I'm asking, in the chat, I see that Counsel Member De Michelle has an alternate motion, and that Counsel Member Goodman wanted to move the motion, what would be the appropriate order for that?
Mayor, I'd suggest that they be called on in chronological order, and we'll see where we go.
Okay, let's start with Counsel Member De Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I would like to move to postpone AB 8291 to a City Council meeting in February 2022, following a broader conversation on the City Council's legislative structure at the January 2022 City Council Retreat.
And is there a second? Deputy Counsel President Ray, seconds, and Counsel Member De Michelle, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli, yes. I was somewhat surprised to see this moving forward so quickly when I received the packet, and I felt like there had not been enough discussion among the council members. And I don't think that there's any reason that we should rush into discharging this group. I would, I'm looking forward to having a broader discussion at our retreat in January, and I think at that point, we could take this motion if it fits in with the overall plan that the council puts together through that discussion. I know that there's a lot of interest in going back to council committees, and if that's the case, but as a person who just joined the council a couple of years ago, never really experienced the council committee process, I'd really like to have us have that broader discussion before we make a decision on this particular group. So, and the fact that there are no meetings scheduled, and so I'm not understanding any reason to rush forward and make a decision tonight. So that's my reasoning for putting forward the motion, thank you.
Thanks. Deputy Counsel President Ray, did you want to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli, this is Chris Ray, and Counsel Member, Counsel Member De Michelle said it brilliantly, there is no, there is no rush to do this, so let's take our time. We also have plans to look at this in the larger context, so let's, let's understand the landscape of where we're going, and February seems like a perfectly reasonable time for it to me, so I think this makes the best sense to do it once and do it right instead of reworking it.
Thank you. Any other comments from Counsel Member Hall?
Thank you, this is Counsel Member Hall. You know, I, I'm not sure where I was going to end up, up tonight, but I was eager to hear from all of the other council members on what they were thinking, and try to find, is there a path that gets us to, you know, agreement here, and it meets all of our needs that were discussed at the Good of the Order, you know? So there's the transparency aspect, there was the policy discussion aspect, and then there's this new aspect that's been introduced to the conversation tonight now of having a broader discussion about how we work as a city council and whether or not we want to just include that as one element of a broader conversation. So I think this meets all of our needs, especially because there aren't going to be any meetings in the near future that we're able to meet, kind of check off all three of those boxes and honor all three of those aspects, so I think I'll be voting in favor of this tonight.
Any other council member comments? I'm just keeping my eye on the chat. Counsel Member Goodman?
Thank you, Counsel Member Goodman here. I, it's not something I'm going to fall on my sword on, I just think it's a little bit weird that the, I think we're conflating a whole bunch of things here. I think one of the, if one of the issues is transparency, okay, if we're not going to have any meetings, then there's nothing to be not transparent about, but if we're not going to have any meetings, then, and almost everything on the list of the scope of work that the ad hoc was going to complete is done, with the exception of some policy fraction, which isn't going to happen until way after January or February, then I don't understand why we would postpone an agenda bill until February, when there isn't any work happening for ad hoc anyway. So again, like I said, I think it's a kind of an odd position to take, and an odd motion to make, but I'm not going to be around for you all to figure out what you want to do in January, and so I think I raised the issues that I want to raise. I think you've also heard from a couple of people in the public that they have concerns about the transparency of a two-year-long ad hoc committee, which I would agree with, and in less than two months, I will be a regular person living in the city, and so I would hope that you would all choose great transparency over a two-year-long ad hoc in the future. So if this is what, if this is what you want to do, then I'm fine with it, but I just think it's really odd.
Thank you. Counsel Member Walsh?
Thank you, this is Counsel Member Walsh. I really appreciate the opportunity to have a larger conversation about transparency. I think we could certainly have that and find a way that works toward a need for transparency, works toward a need for the council to understand what our goals and objectives are, and also goes through an understanding of, you know, how do we want to work as an organization? How do we want to consider options? And how do we want to take a very important piece of our work plan and make sure that it gets ferried forward in a way that, you know, meets that need and meets the transparency need? So I look forward to having that conversation next year, should we support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Member Walsh. Counsel Member Mertz, I don't see anybody wanting to comment a second time, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to comment if you wanted to.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is Counsel Member Mertz. Yeah, I don't see any harm in holding off, I think that I'm one of the people that's very, very excited to have a conversation about what our review process will look like for the next year or two or more, and how we felt about moving from standing committees to study sessions, and I think waiting a little bit to see how that conversation goes before finishing the work of the current ad hoc committee would not harm either transparency or the business of the city, so I see the merit in it, and I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other comments in the chat, I will go back and read the motion that's on the floor. The motion is to postpone AB 8291 to a City Council meeting in February 2022, following a broader conversation on the City Council's legislative structure at the January 2022 City Council Retreat. Am I missing something? I think I caught everybody. Okay. City Clerk, do you want to call the roll?
Yes, starting with Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Member Walsh?
Aye.
Counsel Member De Michelle?
Aye.
Counsel Member Goodman?
Aye.
Counsel Member Hall?
Aye.
Counsel President Hunt?
Aye.
Counsel Member Mertz?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, that passes unanimously. We're moving into Good of the Order, and if you have any items for it, please put your name in that chat, and I'll call on you. I'm going to go through a couple of little upcoming meetings that I have here. On November 23rd, the City Council is having a study session, and the potential agenda items include form and surface water and wastewater master plans, Metro Discussion on East Link, and 2022 Downtown Issaquah Association Memorandum of Understanding. On December 1st, the council will be holding a special council meeting at 8:00 AM, it will be our legislative breakfast. And on December 6th, regular council meeting, the potential agenda items include Issaquah Creek flood studies and strategies, and the climate action plan. I see that Counsel Member Goodman has a comment for Good of the Order.
Thank you, Counsel Member Goodman here. It's kind of a question, it's a follow-up question to the, the comments that Nicole Miller raised, and then the comments that Administrator Bogkowitz made after that, around the mayor's report time, and that is the, the information we heard tonight about the national retailers and their policies about shoplifting. So what I think is interesting, and maybe in your talks with the national retailers, you found to answer this question, but that is, seems to be a recent change, and four years ago, I was in the middle of, like physically in the middle of a scuffle in the Safeway Parking Lot of the Highlands with somebody coming out of the store trying to steal like a 12-pack or pack of Coke, and the security person in the store trying to stop that person from stealing it. We were right outside, just as the parking lot transitioned from the sort of where you drive and then you park. And before I even left the parking lot, two Issaquah police officers responded. So at that point, clearly Safeway was still calling Issaquah Police. And then in the, boy, how many years, 1989, you do the math, since I've been here, you couldn't go to Target ever really and be there and not have an Issaquah Police car in the parking lot because we had been called for shoplifting. So it's interesting to me that in a very short period of time, the policy has changed from, from calling on very small thefts, you know, like how much is a 12-pack of Coke? Well, it's more today than it was four years ago, but it's not very much, it's certainly not a felony. And, and, you know, now they're not even calling on big things, and, you know, I'm up here in the Highlands, and every single time I go to the store, I see somebody with shopping carts putting things in the carts, exactly what Nicole Miller was talking about. I think I may have been at Target the day she was there, because I think I saw that person with the cart in the alcohol aisle. So I would just be interested to know specifically what, what caused that policy to change nationally and why. I just think that's, I think that's interesting, and I think, you know, we had heard something from, from, well, it was from Connie, about our losing history when we have a lot of turnover. it was from Connie, about our losing history when we have a lot of turnover. And that's, this is something that's, I don't want us to lose the history on that. This is not a national policy that has always been. The national policy has always been, or at least the local policy was, we're calling on every six-pack of Coke that gets stolen. So I think it's a very important question to figure out the answer to. Anyway, that was just my question, and I wanted to throw a little bit of history there, because this is all very new, that we just stand back, and you stand in a parking lot, and you watch somebody at Marshalls, or Home Goods, or Dick's, or Safeway, or Target, just throwing stuff in carts, and nobody does anything. It's shocking. So, anyway.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I think we can provide in Good of the Order a little bit of information tonight, because it is an emerging issue, and it does involve changes. And so I will let Ms. Peter Bobkowitz give you some general information that we've received over the last eight weeks of school.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman. You know, the information I'm going to share is not specific policy to any one store, but really just some comments that we have heard in talking with folks. And it really comes down to the issue of safety and liability. Many of these national chains, as we have talked to them, have told stories of when employees have confronted potential shoplifters, those employees then, you know, being threatened verbally and with weapons in the store. They have had instances where individuals have confronted folks and also have been threatened verbally or with weapons. I think the stores have just decided that the costs associated with the safety of their employees and their customers versus the cost of the items being taken, they don't match. And I think that's been the change, is that there's a certain allowance for that in order to keep the customers and the employees safe. Certainly what we're seeing, and as we've talked with representatives of late, the amount of theft is certainly beyond those general criteria. And so that is what we've tried to point out to these businesses. Quite honestly, they're also struggling with staffing, also struggling at all levels, including management. And so I think things have changed a little bit recently. And Mayor Polly has had discussions with at least one of those national retailers at their regional management level. They understand our community concern for this theft, and we're all working together to try to stop it.
So in short, Councilmember Goodman, this is new. It is new. It is not something that has been in the background and not been enforced before. Cities, these regional retailers are adjusting to what they consider to be very difficult times, but the impacts on the community and the number of calls that we receive about shoplifting and carts being left at the transit center, et cetera, is significantly on the rise. So I feel like it's in our best interest right now to get the correct information out there and to work with the national realtors and say, not okay here, not okay here. What are we altogether going to do differently? Because this is not okay.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate the additional information, and that was my point. This is not, this is new. And it's new recently. And so I appreciate you all working on it, and I appreciate Nicole Miller coming forward and acknowledging it publicly. Thank you.
So do I. I guess when, I'm going to go to Councilmember Martz next, but one other quick word is, if anybody is still watching us tonight at 8:54, is please call, and don't interject yourself into these situations. If the retailers are deciding it's because it could be potentially harmful to their employees, I'm concerned that it can be potentially harmful to anybody who intercedes. You just need to call the police and provide the information that you have, and not put yourself in any sort of personal danger. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up on that, I would be very interested to hear from our interim chief as to whether there are opportunities or emerging thoughts in public safety on how to address this. I totally get that we shouldn't ask a sales clerk who's working at Target to endanger themselves to necessarily get a 12-pack of Coke, although I applaud Councilmember Goodman's willingness to mix it up to help kind of keep her community safe. Oh, maybe she wasn't, maybe she wasn't, maybe I heard that wrong.
Ran into me.
Oh, I see. Gotcha. But I do wonder. I mean, the police are very good at managing risk and deescalating. I, you know, I recently saw Ben get somebody who was very angry. By the time they were done, he was fine with them putting the cuffs on him and putting him in the back of the car. So I do wonder if there are emerging, I have to think the police have seen this elsewhere, and they're ideas on how to address it. And I wonder if we bring the IPD together with some of these businesses. I think what we want to do is, you know, just get, if anybody's thinking about doing this, they shouldn't, and they particularly shouldn't do it in Issaquah. So we'd love to, we'd love to hear more from the IPD on this subject on a later date. Thank you.
Sure. We'll get an update for you. I mean, I think some of our recent successes are because we agree that the asset managers that do protect the assets of the store can only go so far, but they have to know that we're there with them. And so I think some of the outreach that Acting Interim Chief Shwan has done has been amazing. So, and it's shown some results, which is great. But we're not there yet. We're not all the way there. Thank you. I also had an item for Good of the Order. It's kind of a fast one, but I just wanted to let you know, come January 1, King County District 3 will have a new council member. We have seven mayors within this district, and about, back in August, we started to have some Wednesday morning meetings to talk about common administrative issues that we've had. We had a luncheon on December 11, and that would be Duval, Redmond, Carnation, Snoqualmie, North Bend, Bammish, and Issaquah, to talk about what a collective agenda for our King County Council member might look like. We share many common interests in terms of transportation projects, environmental preservation, and also flooding. Issaquah's, you know, got flooding history very different than our neighbors to the west, and very similar to our neighbors to the east, although maybe not at scale. So we will be coming back to, at Good of the Order, to our various councils and sharing that draft list, and using that sort of as our template or our playbook within the county to make sure that our new county council member has a good understanding of the needs of the seven cities in our district. So I've gotten information from two cities so far, and putting it together. And at some point, we'll come back and talk about the general strategies, and also the, some of the individual items that are showing up for different cities. But it's not something that needs to be formally adopted. It's just sort of a heads up of, this is what we're hoping our council member can do for us as a district. And I am not seeing any other comments under Good of the Order. There is no executive session this evening, and there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 8:58. Have a great night.